We're good to go? Me?
Yeah, we're lost.
Thanks. Evening, everyone. Welcome to our August fourteenth, twenty twenty four planning board meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance through the flag and the nice face of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I just wanted to say a few words. I think most everyone knows by now that unfortunately, we lost one of our members, Nancy Grabino, last month. An incredibly dedicated planning board member, but probably even more important, a great town member. And a story, and as we've all known, very instrumental in the plan, in the town plans that have gone on for years and a master plan. Nancy always would speak her mind, as everyone knows. You knew exactly where you stood with her. She was a great, a great addition to this board and going to be very, very well much missed. We offer our prayers to the family for her. And if anybody would like to add any thoughts, I just, I enjoyed her company so much over all these years, a long time. How about a moment of silence? Thank you. Steve, would you take the role, please?
Chairman John Curry.
Yep.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Anthony Sutton.
Here.
Christopher Zaberto.
Here.
Thank you. First on our agenda is the draft minutes from the July tenth, twenty twenty four meeting. Any corrections, additions? If not, I make a motion, we accept them as they were presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And next is a continuation of the public hearing on twenty four Ross Drive. It's a steep slope protection, stormwater management and erosion and sediment control application on the town map sixteen dash one oh, sixteen point one oh dash two dash sixty six. The applicants proposing to construct, reconstruct, I should say, the existing house with new septic, provide plantings and a, and a stormwater controls along the existing slope. And for the record, it's at twenty four Ross Drive in our ten zone. Evening.
Good evening. Good evening. So we doubled back on this project. We had a little bit of a redesign of the stormwater mitigation system. So we did away with the buyer retention basin. We wanted to make everything a little bit more simpler. The homeowner didn't want the incur the additional expense of building retaining walls, doing a large buyer retention basin. A lot of the, the issues of the stormwater was the runoff coming from Ross Drive coming down the hill. So the town DPW has, has repaired that. There's a curb along the front of twenty four Ross that prevents that stormwater coming down the road from coming down the hill on twenty four Ross and going into the neighboring property. We've had some pretty big storms since that happened. There hasn't been any, any impact down, downstream of that. So we figured, you know, it would be a good time to, to redesign, take a, take a good relook at the stormwater system. So basically, this area right here where the buyer retention used to be, it's basically going to be an infiltration system. We had done some, we had, we have done deep test pits and percolation tests in this area. We're going to replace it with a gravel line trench along the property line. Basically, a three foot deep, two foot wide trench filled with gravel. In addition to that, we've created some benches of plantings along the slope. And that is to reduce velocities of water as it goes down the slope or it hits this gravel trench. Profiles are the same. The plantings that we've selected are all from appendix H of the stormwater design manual. Basically, some silky dogwoods and choke berries and myburnums, things that are native to, to the area. I did receive Steve's memo, mostly stormwater related type questions and comments. So those will, those will be addressed in the next couple of weeks and for the next submission.
Dave and Steve, comments?
Yeah, thank you for the, for the revised submittal on this. The, you mentioned the, the curb along Ross Drive and the, the lack of any reported flooding events or impacts to the downstream or downhill neighbors from recent storm events. Was that curb in place in the past when flooding events occurred?
No, that curb wasn't installed until I think it was, it was late, late last year was when it was installed. So if you remember, the, the, the two large storms that impacted the bottom part of Ross was, there was a July, I think it was, it was a July fourth storm of twenty twenty three. And then there was another storm, I believe it was August or September of twenty twenty three. Those had rainfall totals over two inches an hour.
Can you remind me roughly what the area of disturbance is for the project?
It was roughly like thirty eight hundred square feet.
Does that include the infiltrators in the south?
Yes.
Where it is?
Yes. Yes, we've, we've, we've reduced it a lot from the original buyer retention basin.
Still well under?
Yes.
The acre of disturbance there?
Yes.
It, it, overall, you know, we were looking for a few more details just to confirm, you know, that the methods of construction are appropriate. This is a a sensitive site. We want to make sure the i's are dotted and t's are crossed, but I think the, the calculations line up and support what's being proposed. We were just looking for some additional data and I think an additional perk test in the area of infiltrators, just because I know you're looking at the septic for guidance on that, but they're fifty feet apart and we've done enough perk tests, you and I, to know fifty feet can make a difference.
Yes.
Those are, those are our comments.
Board member comments and questions?
I recall from the, the sidewalk. And, and I think I heard a comment, there was going to be maybe a, a short driveway to the left side of the, you're facing it for parking.
Yes.
So my, my impression at the time was that that curb was like an emergency measure. And, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering, if they do cut an opening for a driveway, how is that going to be addressed? To confirm that we're not going to have a repeat of that runoff down the hill into the neighbors?
That's a good question. The gravel area right here, it's already existing. That curb runs right in front of that gravel driveway. There's no plans on paving the driveway or, or doing any type of curb cut. So that, that curb in front of Ross Drive is going to stay there in front of that driveway.
Hit to that gravel area, you're going to have to traverse the curb.
Correct.
Probably, as I recall, it was about that high.
Correct. Correct. If, 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 if anything, we, they, the, the home, the homeowner might add a few more inches of gravel on top of the existing driveway just to reduce that speed bump. But the curb itself is going to remain as is.
What's the curbing material that the town used?
Asphalt.
How durable, in your opinion, as an engineer, is that to constant vehicular traffic?
I have one in front of my driveway. It's been there for about ten years.
Any issues?
More, more commonly, we see it, it more as a, as a hump, as a diversion hump, as opposed to a, a true curb. And if I recall, it's not, it's not a standard curb profile, which would be hard for a normal passenger car to get over. It is more of a mountable curb style.
I, I seem to recall from the sidewalk that it was higher than a regular curb and it looked like it was an emergency kind of measure.
True.
You know, my only concern again is if that's cut, is that going to restore some of the original problem?
I think that, that that, the presence of that curb has mitigated the issue to, to a great degree with runoff coming down Ross Drive. So we'll review that with the engineer and make sure that's handled.
Do you feel comfortable with these new plans? Because I mean, the last one with the, with the barrier was a pretty significant change. This is?
It's a pretty significant change. My team and I have, have reviewed it. We have some follow on questions where we're looking for a little bit more detail.
Okay.
But the general approach is, meets the, meets the code and is appropriate. And I think that the
We're always trying to mitigate for the hundred year storm, right?
Yeah, yeah. And, and with the passage of time, we've seen some significant storm events that have caused runoff issues in the past. And the site conditions, especially with that curb, has changed. So
Okay.
The, the ability to maintain that diversion curb is critical to,
Okay.
you know, to this project.
So should, looking, looking forward at the point in time which we're doing a resolution, should the resolution include something about that curb?
That's reasonable.
Yep.
I think it would also include that the driveway remain unpaved.
Whose responsibility? So two, not cutting it would be presumably the homeowner. Maintenance of it, on whose shoulder is the, on whose, whose responsibility is the maintenance of that?
Yeah, that's the town's.
Down, okay. So we could acknowledge both in the resolution? Great. So everybody, everybody has clarity going forward where they stand.
Correct.
I guess then we'll wait. Your revisions and we'll, we'll see you next month.
Yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Should, should we leave the public hearing open?
Oh, yeah, I would think.
This is the first time that
Yeah, nobody has seen it, except, yeah. I would definitely leave the public hearing open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anybody here?
Oh, I didn't even ask. I apologize.
A gentleman came in and I wasn't sure if he was for this. Is anybody here for the public hearing for Ross Drive? No one having self identified with?
Do we have any obligation to contact the surrounding property owners because there's been such a time lapse since this started?
I don't know, Jerry, could you answer? Do you think? Do we, should we notice?
Notice for this, it keeps going out, right? It's on the website.
It's on the website.
Yeah, there's no, I mean, the fact that it gets adjourned is on the website.
Okay.
So, yeah. Plus, there's a hiatus of one time where there's no meeting. There's no need to renotice.
Well, it was probably five or six weeks where it was not on our agenda, but there was meetings, but it was not on our agenda. It was adjourned.
Adjourned.
Yeah.
Well, the applicant asked for that, though.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. But I, I mean, I get where you guys are going. I, I don't know if we need to be too concerned to renotify. I mean, this definitely
All you gotta do is check the website.
Yeah, I mean, these meetings are readily available by recording.
The board can, you know, the board can resolve that the, the applicant shouldn't renotice it for the continued public hearing next month. That's your option.
I don't think it's necessary, to be honest. I mean, there, there's definitely, we've heard from the public on this already. They are aware. They can see that it's not finished yet, right? So it would behoove them to be proactive. And if they have something to say, either put it in writing or come see us. We definitely make it clear that this has been an ongoing thing. I don't think re notifying everyone is necessary in this case, in my opinion.
In your experience, Dave, what is your thought?
So this issue has come up in other communities where an applicant has adjourned over time. And, and I think, if I remember correctly, that there was direction to the applicant that you need to update your plans and come in with revised plans, or the town will drop your application.
Correct. That was how we left it at the lab.
Right. So the applicant has updated their plans as requested by your board. And they're here. And so I, I agree with Chris that there's been an ongoing notice. It's published on the, the town's website. The applicant has followed your direction and updated the plans. So I, in my opinion, you wouldn't necessarily need to renotice the, the public hearing.
Okay. All right. See you next month.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Next is another public hearing for Lawton Adams. It's an application for site plan approval for the construction proposed new building. Eighty four hundred and fifty five minus square feet for retail, a warehouse and office use. And for the record, the property is located at two sixty Route one hundred, and it's in the Office and Light Industries zoning district. Steve, has public notice been put out?
The legal notice was published in the Journal News on August first, twenty twenty four. The adjoining property owners were notified via mail on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on July twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Tim Allen and Bill Ossos, representing Lawton Adams. With me tonight is Lawton, Jesse Sarnoff, Nick Adams, and our architect, Joe LaZarchek. This has been before your board a couple of times. You've had a site walk at, at the property for the public. This property is Lawton Adams' property, sits on the east side of Route one hundred. Lawton Adams' business has been around for almost seventy five years, one of the oldest businesses in all of Tomers. The business itself, as the name states, is material supplies and recycling. The property is twenty acres. We are proposing a new building, roughly eighty five hundred square feet. We'll replace the existing building that has been used for almost since the inception of the business itself. That building will remain as a storage building. In the new building, we'll have warehousing, continuance of the office and the retail in the front of the building. I'll have Joe go through the architectural plans in a minute. Associated with that, we're basically using all areas of previously disturbed areas you saw on the site. The site, the building will be out front. Parking will be utilized in the front for immediate access and it'll be parking off to the side for any overflow. That's, this is before your board for site plan, groundwater overlay protections, special exemption permit, steep slopes permit, and also stormwater erosion control. There'll be seventeen parking spaces. As I said, the existing building will be storage as proposed. There are gas tanks in this area. They'll be relocated up in the upper portion of the property. Actually, members of the board and the public, that's the proposal. I'll have Joe just walk you through, and he's got a very nice rendering of what the building will look like. We will be before the ARB later this month. We've submitted to them. And we hope to have positive feedback from them also. So let Joe quickly discuss the plans.
Good evening. I'm Joe LaZarchek from JPLR. It's basically the rear portion of the building.
Thank you.
Rear portion of the building is the warehouse loading area. The front portion here is the retail and associated administration area for that retail. And then there's a mezzanine level, which will be, the office will be right here. That L-shaped is the second floor of the building. Will be a free, free steel building. Basically, one story. The average height from the midpoint of the roof down to the bottom will be about twenty five feet, the high point about thirty one feet. It will be made up of a board and bat and steel. Standing seams, steel roof, and then a stone skirt with a stone pad. And that's pretty simple in terms of the building.
This will be sprinkled?
No, it's non-sprinkled. It doesn't meet the requirements for sprinkler. If you, as Tim indicated, the eighty five hundred square feet, five thousand is the loading and warehouse. The retail is about three thousand in the front and then the upper levels about two thousand.
With the location of the building itself, from the plan we had seen earlier, did that affect having a separate entrance and driveway? I mean, exit driveway?
Well, it, Tim answered that, but I think it was pre-approved earlier that there was a separate entrance for incoming traffic and then next year, you know, traffic that's exiting.
As we saw it.
Yes, that hasn't changed.
Okay. I know part of your goal had been to suppress the amount of dust that the trucks that exit the yard emit.
Right.
And I observed yesterday a truck exiting. It just totally surrounded with the same appearance that it had a year or two ago. Is there any way to continue trying to reduce that? Because that dust is going onto our roads and into the air.
I did notice that over the weekend as well. I don't know if your system wasn't right. You know, after the rains, we had a couple of days of a dry spell there, and I also noticed that as well. Same truck exiting. Actually, it was Bedford Town trucks that were coming out and, you know, just a lot of dust behind them. So you know, that, that has been a, a point for a lot of the residents in the community and they still talk of it. And so they're concerned, you know, maybe there's an update or a newer, better way to mitigate some of that dust.
I don't want to sound like a pile on, but yes, between last meeting and this, at times when the, the operation was closed, a notable amount of dust at that part in the road. So I can say yes.
Yeah, I was remiss in talking about the entrance and the exit, the new configuration of this in and out, better traffic configuration on the property. It also allows us to control more of the outbound trucks a little better with regard to dust. Dust has always been a problem here. It's been on for, for quite some time. Lawton and, and staff does their best to try to control that as best they can. In the new plan and in the future, what, what they're planning on doing is providing a mister that'll, that'll help clean and, and keep down the dust. In addition, Lawton is committed to getting a new sweeper out there. So it's an ongoing battle that we hopefully will maybe not win, but will certainly, as they do now, is try to, try to control it as best they can.
And all new blacktop as well. Blacktop sweeper will be able to keep it clean. It's a struggle right now.
Do you want to come up to the mic so everybody? Here. Thank you, Mr.
Good evening, Lawton Adams. So we're going to be more specific. We have an irrigation company that's designing a misting system. It'll, it'll be overhead and just a very light mist, but it should be, be very effective to keep anything from coming out into the road. Secondly, we're going to have all new blacktop in the entrance and the exit. And it, blacktop, when it's in good shape, is much easier to keep clean. And we're going to, we're going to purchase a new sweeper that also puts water down. And I think it'll be a substantial difference.
Could I, could we see the site plan again to see the the entrance and exit? Related to the building?
The inbound about here, now cut in, you saw in the field. And then the outbound will be a, the current in and out on the side in between what will, the existing building and the new building.
What, what is preventing the cars that visit that site to go out the inside?
Clearly marked and, you know, hopefully someone will read the signs and, and see the arrows and in and out one way only.
You'll have like new, no, no entrance or something like that? Because that's the last thing you need is private car eating one of your trucks.
And the plan is still to have scales in and out?
Actually, the plan is now So initially, we were going to have scales in and out, but we've looked into other options. There's scales that actually go on the loaders. And these scales can communicate with the office. It's a much more efficient operation. And it, it doesn't, it, it keeps the traffic flowing if we don't have the, the queue lining up for the scale. So we may put a scale in another location just for a certain, certain part of the business, but for the, the main portion, we'll use the loader scales. And there'll be very good signage and we'll also, we'll have people out there, especially in the first few months, making sure that everybody knows where the in is and where the out is. That's a very big concern of ours in the beginning, so.
Yeah, I would assume so.
Yeah.
I just had one question on the, the architecture of it, the, the the second floor administration above the, the lobby.
The mezzanine.
Right. Is that, is that going to extend all the way to the back of the building or is that going to stop?
No, no. That, that's basically
And then the back is storage all the way up to the, to the roof?
Dave and Steve?
Yeah, Tim, my, my only question, and I, I think you've answered most of it, it was just related to circulation. And you've been able to coordinate with New York State, New York State DOT on the curb cuts? That's, that's already been reviewed by them?
That's how we cut it at entrance already.
Great, thank you.
I, I saw the entrance for the retail store, but on the drawing of the building, it looked like there was an entrance on the other side. Was, am I mistaken?
There's aggressive egress on, on both sides. The main entrance to the retail be from the front.
Main entrance is there. What is?
There's a window that can watch the traffical exit.
Okay.
Yep, we had some minor comments related to the stormwater, looking for some additional pre-post calculations. We requested one of the standard catch basins to be changed to a deep sump catch basin just for more effective pollutant removal from that structure. And providing a draft stormwater maintenance agreement for this, this property as well. So relatively minor engineering comments from the stormwater perspective. I was wondering if, if we could talk a little bit more about the, the dust mitigation and the circulation of traffic on the site. Specifically, on this site plan, does the existing, or, or will the proposed pavement stop and transition to kind of the gravel or, or dirt surface? Or is that what it transitions to off the pavement?
It transitions, basically, most of this is all paved up through here.
Currently.
Transitions through gravel through the site. So, and it'll again be in and either in this direction upward into the back of the property or in and in this direction out, obviously will be through the out, everything coming out. Again, it provides much better control and ultimately, as Bruce was saying, you know, in the beginning, it's going to be a little confusing, but ultimately be a much safer condition on Route one hundred.
I think it's a much better, much better circulation. Where roughly is the end of the new asphalt on that site plan? Is that kind of the dashed line?
Right, right as you transition past
Right there.
The back into that back lower area.
And then it's
That building steps down.
The material beyond the asphalt is gravel and, you know, whatever falls off the side of the truck after being loaded, you know, it's a, it's a mix of material there.
Correct.
So I think part of the, part of the challenge with maintaining dust control, leaving the site is is trucks tracking that material onto the existing asphalt, which will obviously, as Mr. Adams stated, be easier to clean once it's new asphalt and you have a new sweeper. You kind of have, have created a, a control zone there that you can, you can manage better. It, it strikes me that the, the rest of the yard is, the use is, is typical of a, of a construction site. And often in construction sites, we have a, a construction site entrance with some, some larger gravel that's designed to, to catch some of that, some of that material from the tires and keep it from tracking on the roadway. And I'm wondering if your team has, has thought about it, about adding that kind of construction entrance type detail of some larger, larger stone, not the finer gravel and, and that would have to be maintained, but you obviously have the equipment and materials to do so there. And that might help mitigate the tracking of material onto your asphalt and, and then off the site. Has that been discussed? Is that feasible for the site operations?
We can do an anti-tracking pad, what you're referring to. Perhaps something, I don't know if you're familiar with a cattle guard?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we, we were discussing that because then it could be maintained easier. And anti-tracking on a construction site is more for temporary use. This would be more permanent.
You have the equipment to maintain it kind of in perpetuity, but I was thinking something like that, I think, would help, would help you and your operation maintain that asphalt and probably reduce the amount of time you have to spend in a sweeper.
I agree.
Can you point to the location where the, the misting system that you're proposing would be installed? Is that kind of on the, the exit lane of the asphalt? Is that kind of on the the exit lane of the asphalt?
Yeah, I don't think I've ever used a pointer.
It's the first time for everything. It's not on the inside. It's it's on the going outside.
Very, very close to where the existing gates are. And we'll have a cable hung obviously high enough. And we're just looking in and getting the right type of misters. So it has just enough water, it it'll keep the water volume, the water use down. But it doesn't take much to cut dust if you just have have moisture, even on a humid day, it's easier to control.
That's right at the right at the exit and you're really kind of controlling the. The dust on the vehicle, on the payload of the vehicle. Or is that gonna be sufficient to maintain essentially what's tracked off site?
It's really like a last line of defense, so any any dust that is getting sucked out with the vehicles is stopped by that water curtain.
I think it's a good good last line of defense and and it might behoove you to add another line of defense.
Oh, without a doubt. We have a water truck and sprinklers and and we're gonna add to that as well.
The cattle guard option is is will probably help you.
Where is the cattle guard?
I'm sorry?
Where is that cattle uh?
The cattle guard would be uh. Where there's a there's a big intersection here.
Right.
Where traffic meets, so it would have to be there where the traffic funnels. And this way, every vehicle has to go over it.
And that would be like the transition zone between the unpaved and the paved.
Correct, would be just outside of the paved area.
I appreciate you considering that.
You did well with the pointer.
Yeah. I'm usually getting pointed at.
I I I was gonna ask you, and I used to get smacked with one of them. Um, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public wishes to be heard tonight? How about any more board member comments or questions?
I think we saw um mental for open space, which.
Yes.
Too, so I don't think there are any. Pending open things to discuss with that. Um, the applicant says they're gonna consider the dark sky compliance sliding. Um, and they answered the other. Material questions, so I I think everything in that regard is good.
Board comfortable, make a motion to uh close the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, second.
Aye.
All in favor? Thank you. How do you feel about um? Asking staff to prepare a resolution?
Yeah, I I think I think we can uh.
You feel comfortable, Steve?
Yeah, I do.
Dave? Yeah, Tim, make a motion to ask staff to prepare a resolution then.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the the uh craft beer is dead, huh? Thanks a lot.
Maybe the next seventy.
Evening, thank you. Good night. Our next on our agenda is uh Prodigy Athletic C at Rockledge Center, which was formerly Pinewood Center. It's an application for site plan approval. Um, and it's. The re-stripping of existing asphalt drives and to construct three landscape planters. To create an additional thirty seven parking spaces on the existing site. The building is currently operating as a warehouse with a partial second floor office. And is applying for change of use to permit Prodigy Athletics to operate the proposed athletic twenty fifth. And for the record, the property is located at two forty seven Route one hundred, and it is also in the OLI history zoning district. Um, Steve, has public notice been? Presented?
Uh, the legal notice was published in the Journal News on August first, twenty twenty four. The adjoining property owners were notified by mail on July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four. And the sign stating the date and location of the public hearing was posted on the site on October second, I'm sorry, August second, twenty.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening, uh, Tom Smith from McDermott Architecture. We also have a hard copy of the sign, David, if you want. Okay, thank you. So since our last meeting on July tenth, um, we've had an opportunity to review. The additional memos that came in from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, uh, the Open Space Committee, uh, and there there's a. We had had reviewed and responded. Um, but. I think the uh the most important one was uh was Steve's memo. And in the submission, what we really tried to do is to focus on our erosion sediment control plan. And minimize our impact on the site, although it's a minor action, uh, we wanted to to try to. You know, take as many steps necessary to mitigate that. Um, so I'd like to just take a moment to go through what we've done uh since then, so. First things, flip this over to the erosion sediment control plan. So the the first thing that you notice is that uh we changed the shape of the planters. Um, they are now uh stormwater planters. They're have a slight depression to them. Um, we also uh. Changed the mulch from wood mulch to uh Mexican beach pebble stone. I'm actually gonna raise this up a tiny bit. I don't have to slouch. Uh, in in addition to that, we have added inlet protection to all of the catch basins that are downstream from our from our work. Uh, there are two out at Route one hundred that you can see here. In addition to that, we added uh silt socks at um intervals. And I forget what the the interval is, I think it's. Maximum sixty feet intervals um on the downslope of our south egress. And the intent with that is to to capture any um sediment as the the runoff flows down that way toward those catch basins. So in addition to the inlet protection, we also have those as a secondary um mitigation. Um, in in addition to. The erosion and sediment control plan, um, we've also uh delineated the limits of disturbance and I'll flip back. It's a little hard to see here, but I'll try to outline it for you, so. Goes from down here up along our drive. Along our building. Over here. And then it follows the south property line. Back to Route one hundred and that's it. So it's a very small limit of disturbance. Uh, in response to uh the the memos from the Open Space Committee, we we uh took the opportunity to um. Change the planting. Um, one of the comments that they had was uh about the um the flowering tree at the uh ADA spaces. So we eliminated that tree, uh, and another suggestion was to add some um pollinator plants. So I uh I added um two two plants to those uh planters. Uh, I added uh moonbeam coriopsis, which is a a yellow flowering plant. And Walker's low catment, which is um like a. A purple, so nice complementary colors. I'll add some color to the uh to the planters as well as uh pollinator plants. Um, at the southwest corner of the building, one of the comments that was brought up um in. The uh Westchester County Planning Memo, or I think Steve's memo also, was just that we were a little too close. In the south uh southeast corner, so we eliminated the parallel parking space there. Uh, we striped that area and we added no parking signs mounted to the building across from it and in that location. In addition to the um sediment and control plan, we also added a a detailed construction sequence. Um, that that outlines all of the steps required to set up all of the erosion control uh erosion sediment control plans. Um, and uh for the construction and for uh keeping them up during that and then taking them down. The the last thing was that uh we added the the topo in this area. So the topo here was taken from the Westchester County GIS maps, uh, and we added those um those contour lines at two feet. And we're not proposing any any changes to the existing topo, so those are existing to remain. I think I think that covers just about everything. Um, I'd like to open the floor to the for for any questions.
Uh, I'd just like to hear from staff, Steve.
So Tom, one of the uh comment letters that came in was from Westchester County. And um they had, one of the comments that they raised was um the issue of sidewalks. And we had discussed this, you know, in response, and as you recall. Uh, you had a similar application just up the road with Glenida. Uh, and the county made the same comment and you you went back and forth with the applicant. And um. It didn't make sense to uh to have sidewalks where there really wasn't any place to go per se. And so um with the Glenida, there was a um. The applicant, your board agreed that there would be a fee in lieu of. And so one of the issues that we discussed with uh with the project team is. Uh, you don't have the the northern uh driveway.
No, I I I don't have it.
But that's okay, so it it going from the northern drive, if you were to have a sidewalk on Route one hundred, the most logical place would be. Um, on the northern driveway to the convenience store. I don't think that anybody would for using this facility would walk all the way down that driveway. To use the um a a sidewalk, but and. It's a consideration for you to discuss with the applicant. Um, if you're amenable, you could have a community benefit agreement where in lieu of the sidewalk, they would provide funds to. Uh, the town that would go towards. The implementation of pedestrian improvements in other parts of the town, particularly. The the town of Somers has always talked about improving the Hamlet area here. With additional sidewalks and pedestrian circulation. So I think it's it's probably in keeping with. Um, your past practice, at least as it results, we relied on from uh the Glenida application. So I just wanted to bring that. That was the other comment. And the other thing is, you did have correspondence with from New York State DOT.
The DOT, right, that was the other thing.
Yeah, and they reviewed your application, they reviewed your traffic impact uh report, and they found that there would be no. Uh, changes to the site plan as a result of your analysis. So I think, yeah, we we had originally. Had a condition in the approval of the draft resolution that you had asked us to prepare. That in the event that New York State DOT required. Improvements, they would they would have to come back, but they resolved that issue with DOT by working with them directly.
Correct, right, and I I've provided a copy of the email correspondence with uh Andrew Alex, who's the uh permanent engineer at the DOT. Sorry.
So, Mr. Chairman, those are my comments, let's.
Dave. Excuse me, you referred to the offset uh against sidewalk bust. Um, that example uh just repeated itself. I understand with the Chase Bank, the old Chase Bank property, which will become a yoga studio. I understand they have agreed as well. To make a contribution in funds that will go to sidewalks where the town deems them to be appropriate.
Yeah, I'm I'm unaware of uh any negotiations between Chase Bank and the town board for.
It was uh with Chase, it was with the the building owner.
Well, with the built with the property owner, I'm not I'm unaware of.
Okay.
Yeah, it may be that they are um. Working with the property owner on getting the land area. Necessary to uh the right of way to include um a sidewalk. But I'm 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 not aware of the exact discussion that the town have had with that.
It even had the dollar amount of the offset in the Somers record, I believe. And the issue that came out last week.
Okay.
I'd go back and look at that.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and I didn't see a copy upfront, right, go get it.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, um, so there was a dollar amount and it compared the dollar amount to the Glenida dollar amount, so it was quite specific.
Okay, and 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 the resolution you have before you, we use the same ratio.
Exactly the same rate.
Exactly the same ratio, so that.
And that's what it referred to?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. The the planting areas, you're speaking about pollinator plants. What, are there any evergreen?
Yes, uh, there are. So give me one second.
Because during the winter, pollinator plants look. Like they're dead.
Yep.
Obviously.
So uh for the the flowering tree that I have in um the uh the middle planter, I have an Easter rad bud. Um, and all the all the plants are native. Um, the uh shrubs and perennials are compact inkberries, common junipers. Tufted hare grass, which that's uh obviously seasonal, and then the uh the two pollinator plants are the moonbeam coropsus and the walkers low catment. So it's not a incredibly diverse um flora and fauna, but uh. I'm 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 an architect, I'm not a landscape architect, so.
Basically.
Fair enough.
Basically, the green plant, the juniper.
Yeah, they're right, that we have junipers and we have inkberries, um, that that'll uh keep their leaves year round.
Okay. The other thing is. Are you are you comfortable with the analysis that they made? That uh. That the DOT made with regard to. Uh, most of the people are gonna be dropped off and picked up and not not are young people and. They're not gonna be uh. The need for excessive parking? Cause I was, I just thought that uh I was questioning that.
So we hired Barton and Judith to do a a parking study on our behalf. Um, that parking study found that most of um, you know, most of the uh. The users were children that were middle school to high school age, and they were dropped off between five and eight P M Harrison. Not mistaken, uh, and we're anticipating the same exact use for this type of building. The the intent is to use the um the building as a practice for volleyball.
I think just at five to ten P M on the party.
Oh, is it five to ten? Well, I think I think it closes at ten, so that that would be when pickup is, right, like between nine and ten. But the 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 point to take from from that is just that the office and warehouse use and the the two forty seven building. The two forty seven A building, which is this one here. That is really uh the peak times are from eight in the morning till five at night, right? And so as everyone's leaving from this building. The the children are just, you know, filtering in for these two uses. Um, the other thing that that uh they found is that. Most people that are gonna use this building are not gonna park here, right? They're gonna drive all the way around and and park here or or drop off and then even come back.
So with the elimination of that one parking space uh and the signage. What's the distance from the corner to the to the edge of the the driveway there?
Twenty six point four one feet. That's from the the building to the the property line, and there's a there's a fence just property line.
Yeah, but in terms of like tractor trailer or or tractor truck or something?
Yep, so I um I did an analysis. I I have software called um vehicle tracking. Uh, it's a Autodesk software. It makes uh AutoCAD. Uh, and I was able to take um a forty foot pumper truck and run it through the site from both directions. I came up. Through the south entrance uh and made my way out through the north, and I came up through the north and made my way out to the south with no problems.
Steve, and Dave, yeah, Eve?
Yep, the um the applicant has has addressed the comments that we had um with this site plan revision. Um, I appreciate, can you can you clarify, though, the? The area of disturbance that you've identified, that you've provided stormwater, uh, you know, erosion sediment control around? Are you resurfacing the parking there?
No.
You're simply restripping?
Yeah, just restripping, right? It's all existing asphalt. Um, there'll be some asphalt asphalt removal at the areas of uh the the stormwater planters. But beyond that, there there's no other proposed asphalt work.
So I I think that the erosion and sediment control that's been proposed is is pretty robust for the amount of uh disturbance that's occurring on the site. Um, they have they have silt fence in a lot of areas that they're not disturbing, so it's 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 robust. The addition of. Uh, the catch basin protection at the bottom of the hill is absolutely appropriate, um, but I have no concerns with the erosion sediment control as presented.
Any other member comments? Well, it is a public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public wishes to speak?
I'm making motion to close the hearing.
There's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, is there any more board member comments? No? Well, how do you feel? I mean, we have a resolution.
So I guess the question is, where are we with ongoing edition seven, which was written tentatively, but then struck out?
Right.
So that's that's the issue with the provision of fee in lieu for the sidewalk.
Okay.
And.
So I can I talk on that for?
Yes, absolutely.
So it's it's my feeling that um based on. Our our action, uh, since this is such a minor action, I I feel like asking um my client to put sidewalks. All the way uh across Route one hundred, uh, which I think it's it's over a thousand linear feet, um, is excessive. I have spoken with my client about the possibility of doing the the agreement with the town for the sidewalk from the northern entrance up, which I think is about one hundred and sixty, one hundred and seventy feet, and they would be open to doing that. I think that that would be fair, but to ask us to do sidewalks, I mean, if we were building a new building, I could understand, but for three land landscape planters, I me, it's excessive task, you know, an undue financial hardship on.
I I don't think that the planning board was or the town was looking for the sidewalk along the entirety of the site. I think I explained it's from the that northern driveway.
Entrance.
For the to the north to the property line. My estimation is about one hundred and eighty eight feet. When I do the 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 ratio, it works out to about nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that's that was that is the contribution that you would be agreeing to in principle. It would be part of a community benefits agreement.
And just for the record, this is based on a recommendation from the Westchester County Planning Board.
Correct, right, right. Not this board, understood.
Yeah. And then, Mr. Chairman, on the 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 resolution that you have for you, I got some input from Mr. Riley on the on page three at the it's the one, two, it's the third resolve clause or fourth resolve clause. The planning board accepts the applicant's representation relative to the proposed use and its intensity as described in the documentation provided to the town, including the the traffic impact analysis and the parking report. And Jerry, you had some suggested language.
Yes, it it. In other words, it's more suggestive to the applicant to make sure he understands. And what I suggested was, however, the use is, if the use is significantly changed and or the intensity of the activity significantly increased, the applicant, the applicant agrees to return to the planning board to amend the site plan. The word significant means notable. The the one thing that that struck me here is it's a practice facility for kids. If it turns into they get teams, and then we have the parents and other people showing up, then the traffic analysis is put. So I would, my hope that this would, that the board would find that this might ensure the protection for the town and the board and put the applicant on notice that if he decide, and you know, if things gets much better, like people don't go into a project looking forward to fail. They look forward to improve. And since it was their traffic analysis, you agreed, you agreed to, if it's changed by the by the use of the intensity, I I think they should have to come back.
I I agree.
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree with.
Yeah, that's what I was driving towards, the idea that there's going to be more people there than.
Possibly.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I I think if we circle back to the very beginning, this building was operated illegally prior to Harrison and his partner taking over the the site as a volleyball practice facility. And apparently, it's my understanding that they had a tournament there of some sort, and someone got hurt and an ambulance couldn't make its way through because we had parking issues. So one of the things that, no, not quite. Okay, I I spoke over on, you say, do you want? Yeah. All that Harrison.
Previous owner had in in trying to save money, had not heated the building sufficiently, and the pipes are frozen, and there was no water while they were hosting a tournament. There were other buildings with water and restrooms, and someone in a wheelchair was taken to another building to use the restroom and complained to the Department of Health about that. But there was never any issue with ambulances or people getting hurt or ingress or egress. It was it was improper use of the building without the proper permits and having gone through the right channels, trying to do the right way. And we've been trying to do that since we took over the project. So just to clarify.
Sorry about that. Sorry for the confusion. And yeah, and that's and that's why we're here.
Yeah, and if the other story is going to grab the headlines, so. To Jerry's point, you know, if you if you start running tournaments where you've got a lot more activity.
There's there's these, there's a lease excluded, right? Or or something written into the lease that prohibits that.
It's everybody's is clear on the on the usage.
Yep. Yeah. And and so.
So there there are no stands. There are no stands or sitting.
No, no.
Okay.
No, and and there's no intent to use the building that way.
So you have a resolution before you that has been the, you know, the suggested edits, if you want to include those.
Are you okay with the with the nine thousand dollar figure too?
Harrison? Okay.
Board board members?
Are you okay with this resolution with the changes that were just presented? Okay, I make a motion, we accept resolution. Oops, sorry.
As amended, that we're bringing seven back in. It's been struck out, so the
Yes.
be to turn seven is the prior to the issuance of a building permit was struck out because there's significant.
Right. Yeah, I yes, I reviewed that with Steve Wolf, and he said we didn't need to have, you did not need to have that as a condition.
Okay, so that remains struck, but we're bringing back in seven.
Correct. And you're and you're modifying the resolve clause.
As per.
Right, language from Jerry, right.
Those with those.
And the money.
And the money.
And the money.
And the money. Yeah, that's that's number seven.
Sure. With all those.
Yes. Okay, it's Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh eight. It's agreeing of conditional site plan approval and stormwater management and erosion sediment control. The permit is to project Athletics LLC for town tax number section twenty eight dot ten, block one, lot six dot ten. All in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Very much. Good luck.
Next on our agenda is twenty four Orchard Hill Road. It's a wetland water course application. It's the applicant is seeking to construct three hundred and fifty five foot square foot, one story addition the existing accessory structure. And for the record, the property is located at twenty four Orchard Hill Road and is in an R one twenty zoning district. Conservation easement evening.
Good evening. Sid Schloerman, architect from S I Design. The application, as you mentioned, it's a single family residence. There's an existing accessory structure that's about twelve thousand square feet. I understand many years ago, it was a tennis club, belonged to the single family residence. And the application is to build a three hundred and fifty five square foot addition, of which a portion of the existing building and a eighty approximately eighty square feet of the proposed addition fall within the one hundred of the water course. So hence the application for the wetlands permit. It is an ideal location for the addition. It's zoning compliant in terms of the setbacks from the side yard. And basically, it's there's no basement. The excavation is limited to the footing and foundation. It's about fifteen yards of dirt. We would, you know, install soil erosion silt fence and to control anything from running downstream downhill. And that's basically the application for you. We did receive a comment, a memo from the Open Space Committee that they basically said it was a small enough project where they had no comments.
And zoning of this R one twenty?
One twenty. One twenty, yeah.
To give you an idea, it's a little sketch. The existing Butler built here, there have already been some additions here. You see on the right side, this is existing. This portion here would be the the addition, kind of aligning with the roof of the previous addition.
And then so now, how many square feet does that add?
That adds three fifty five, the total number. I believe it needs to be less than thirteen thousand in total. It's twelve thousand for twelve thousand ninety for the existing previous addition, five thirty nine, three fifty five for this one. So we're at twelve nine eighty four in total. Yeah, that was it.
The limit. Oh, yeah. What's the water course?
There's a pond and then a little stream with a culvert, the roadway, the driveway actually goes over the the culvert. And then just another small little pond. So the hundred foot off of that, from the water line. And I think we did it at its at its low point. And so a small portion of the addition falls within the buffer, I think up to ninety one feet, where one hundred is required.
Dave and Steve?
Was the, and I I know you've been in in conversation with with Mr. Wolfle in the engineering department office. Was the the wetland buffer line revised from the initial submittal?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
And so do you have a zoom in site plan of that just to?
Uh, I do not. I can catch it for you.
I'm trying to understand, you know, you.
I can bring it to you.
More for for everyone else to see. How much of the proposed addition falls within that hundred foot?
About it's eighty square feet out of the three fifty five, so less than twenty five percent.
And some of the existing building also falls within?
Yes, correct.
And how is the roof runoff for the existing building managed? And how is the the roof runoff from the?
It basically goes to the ground.
With their, so one of the, when the town has a an application that involves disturbance in the wetland buffer, the planning board often looks for some kind of a mitigation for that disturbance. And and often that takes the form of addressing existing impervious surface in the wetland. We we sometimes see it with residential homes adding a pool, you know, and it ends up in the wetland buffer. And so you know, while there's there's obviously a significant portion of this property in conservation easement, which I think is a good thing, the consideration of a of a small rain garden or something like that to handle the roof runoff from the existing addition and from, sorry, from the proposed addition and the existing building, I think would benefit the project and be in keeping with the the nature of the site.
Yeah, and that's we have no problem with that, and the owner would be very amicable to.
It's not a big area, so.
Yeah. Okay.
That's our comment.
Board member comments? What about scheduling a public hearing? Want a sidewalk? I mean, it's pretty.
I mean, this is, yeah, if no pond there, we wouldn't even be here.
Correct.
It's a pretty simple.
And and it seems, like you said, amicable to put in a rain garden. I mean,
So.
Do you feel comfortable, Steve, that that's that's pretty much all you can ask for?
Thank you.
Not all you can ask, but.
I think something nice should be if the applicant, as part of the public hearing, might be able to present a couple of photos of of the area just to give the board a sense of it that might substitute for a sidewalk.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think if you bring that, I think maybe I'm stepping on, I think we can kind of wrap this up at the next meeting. Safe to say? Yeah, okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you. And next on our.
Quick question.
Sure.
While we totally leave it, should be draft a resolution that we could consider at the last next meeting as well?
Steve, what do you think?
Yeah, I.
I sound because it sounds if we we would have sufficient information by then. So if we could do that, we would.
That's a motion, and I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is New York State D E P, I'm sorry, New York City D E P Forest Management Work Wetland and Water Course Protection Tree Removal Application. This project is linear along New York Route one hundred corridor from Pines Bridge to Musco Farm County Park Park, approximately three and a half miles. It's going to consist of civil cultural forest thinning, replanning and invasive plant control by mechanical and chemical means. Good evening.
Hi, Bart Catarino from the New York City P. Sorry, I don't have a whiteboard with. But I hope.
We don't have a whiteboard for us either.
Yeah.
You can hold the pointer if you feel better.
Yeah, I hope you've all seen the map of the project.
Yes.
And yeah, we're looking to improve improve the conditions in that that corridor between about Pines Bridge Road up Musco Farm County Park, civil culture thinning, enhance the growth of the biggest and best trees on the on the sites and try and remove a lot of the invasive understory, that venting regrowth of new trees. And we we like to plant a good number of trees within the project area as well to mitigate some of the degraded forest conditions throughout the site. And definitely tackle the vine problem that that runs throughout that corridor. Try to, it'll definitely look more appealing afterward on the work.
Great. Dave, I just want to hear from Dave first, yeah.
No, no comments. We received a response.
No, got those already.
Great. Email is great.
Yeah.
Shows up. I haven't had. Sorry. Thank you for for that. We haven't had a chance to review it. Could you 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 summarize at a very high level, what activities in in general categories you're you're planning to perform there?
Yeah.
Could you describe a little bit more as to why? This is a significant project. It's not cheap.
No.
What what the impact to to D E P? Does the impact to water quality? And why are you embarking on this?
Sure. Well, for for D E P forestry in particular, better growing forests and regenerating forests are the key to preserving water quality in the reservoirs. And so all of our projects, that's really the main focus. And in this area, we have a lot of invasive species project problems, which alter the native ecosystem. So we'd like to restore that native ecosystem because it's the best filter for the water coming into the reservoirs.
And what is it about this project area among all of the lands owned by D E P that that makes this the the focus area that you're taking on right now?
Proton's definitely high priority reservoir for algal bloom issues.
What? I'm sorry.
Algal bloom.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Issues.
Very much so.
And they also have some streams that can good good amount of sediment into the curtain reservoir. This type of work will help the capacity of the forest to absorb that water and reduce the stream flows. And really, this project area was focused on because it has a high potential to lose a lot of the forest canopy, primarily because of the vines, but also because of the invasive species problems and problems with regeneration.
You think this is this a staged project in sense that we might be, you might be revisiting us a couple of years from now doing additional work in the area?
It's it's possible. You know, especially kind of the this project, the idea started a long time ago, probably almost eight years ago at this point. And we've had it kind of whittled down as as you know, budgets and and failed bids and things have gone on. So that's why this, the map you have encompasses such a a long stretch, but really, you know, our contract right now encompasses what's in town of Somers. So, yeah, I mean, definitely potential for staged work in the area, going into Yorktown at some point, and, you know, touch up work within the town of Somers.
So our comment letter to the board, this is an unusual application. The board hasn't seen this kind of of activity on on such a scale, certainly in in my history of working with you as the board. So while we we did prepare a bit of a longer memo, it was it was hopefully helpful as a as a summary and direct some of the board's attention to some of the key points that that we saw. Among the activities that are being proposed, you're you're thinning trees, you're removing invasive species, you're putting in deer exposure fencing, which protects the new plantings that you're putting in and allows those native, the native. um, those native, the, the native sea bank to come up and, and regenerate. Um, there is, you know, both, uh, me- mechanical and chemical, uh, applications for invasive species control, correct?
Yes.
Um, and, and including in and around the wetland buffer.
Yes.
Um, there are, there are two chemicals that are mentioned in the work plan, um, glyphosate and, uh.
Trichlophir.
Thank you, because I always mispronounce it. Um, it wasn't a test, it was to avoid myself on that. Um, the, the response that, so one of our, um, our questions about this is the way the work plan is written. It says, these are the, the, the materials that are proposed to be used. Um, and any, uh, deviations from that will be reviewed by DEP prior to approval for use.
Yes.
Um, what does that approval process look like?
Yeah, so, uh, DEP, as you, well, as I'm sure you know, very interested in keeping any toxins or pollutants out of our, out of our reservoir and water streams. So we have on staff, uh, an ecotoxicologist who reviews any and all chemical applications uh, within the watershed. So I'm a re- a registered pesticide applicator. He reviews my applications. Every year I send him the sites that I need to take care of. Um, and he looks at them every year and has to issue me a permit. So, um, no one gets out of it. So, yeah, he does a, a thorough review, uh, based upon, um, it's how the herbicide will act in the environment. So at this point, we mainly use glyphosate and trichlophir because they don't have the capacity to leach uh, out of leach into and move within the soil where, where we apply it. Um, and so that's his real main concern is any sort of runoff and leaching into the water.
Your water.
Our water, your water, everyone's water.
No, I'm saying, I did see that, right? And, and I think generally it would be concerning to hear that this is being done.
Yeah.
But also let's look at who's doing it. And I think you guys have a vested interest to ensure that your croton, which is pretty large, uh, reservoir of the Hudson, uh, doesn't get contaminated with an herbicide.
Yeah, pretty large and.
By your agency.
Yeah.
So.
Well, I just. That would be an issue.
Yeah, um, so for me personally, I think there's a level of confidence there, but we do want to do our due diligence to
Sure.
sure that, uh, our, uh, residents have the same confidence that I do. Uh, and having you explain this stuff is.
Yeah, and, uh, we follow all the guidelines that the DEC puts forth and their label and their requirements as far as the labeling of the chemicals. And they even have further requirements where, um, for a certain target organism, I don't know how much you guys know about pesticide, um, regulations in New York State. Um, so for a given target organism, uh, if it is not on the manufacturer's label, you need to have approval from New York State to use it at a certain rate. Um, so that it's legal for use in New York State. So we follow all those guidelines.
Got it. So this isn't a clandestine application of, uh, of an herbicide to make your job easier. You guys are following
all the. Yeah, we're following research recommendations for, for these chemicals.
And you said they don't, they, they don't have a tendency to leach.
Correct.
Where it's placed.
Correct.
Is it a dry chemical or is it a liquid?
Uh, it's a liquid. Yeah. And so.
How is it applied?
Uh, it can be applied either by what's called hacken squirt. So you put a, if it's a, a tree, generally this would apply to you, you put a cut into the stem of the tree and squirt a small amount into that cut. Uh, it can be done after a tree is felled. Um, so you apply directly to the stump to keep it from respouting. Um, and also foliar application by, um, typically it'd be a backpack sprayer, um, or another low volume type, type spray device, um, very controlled. And, uh, we would seek to minimize the amount of spray application by cutting down any large vegetation, say it's large bushes in one area. There's a big problem with Japanese barberry. Uh, it's throughout the entire, the entire parcel almost. So we would seek to cut down the large bushes. Um, and then only treat the small respouts, uh, so that we're minimizing the amount of herbicide used.
How do you dispose, how do you dispose and where do you dispose of the portions of that that you've cut down? So that it doesn't at all further propagate.
The typically, um, I, that is an issue with some species, yes.
That one.
So with that one, that particular Japanese barberry, it's not. Um, but when that is an issue, uh, yes, they'll be disposed of uh, and composted offsite.
Do you just basically drag and haul versus, uh, like wood, like chip it all onsite?
Uh.
Any of those invases that could.
Right, yeah. Luckily on this site, we don't really have any that would propagate from their stem cuttings. Um, yeah.
Steve, you have any more comments?
No, my, my comment on the, um, on the, the, the herbicides, um, was, was less of concern. I think that they're, they're appropriate. We've had um, some of our ecologists view the proposed work plan, um, and they've advised that, that these are appropriate for the, the type of use. Um, the question for the board, uh, that I had was really for those deviations from those two chemicals, given the fact that this is a, a public process. Um, you know, what notification the town, the, the board feels the town ought to have and, and a role in that. And asked, you know, for again, DEP work, uh, where there's been herbicide applications in the reservoir itself. It was, it was a very specific review and a very specific approval for a very specific chemical. And we had a public hearing and, and a process.
Okay.
So this, I, I have no doubt, uh, that the DEP is, is well qualified to review this, but part of the public.
I have a question. Are, are you exempt from a tree permit?
Um, I don't know. I guess that's a question for.
Well, and the reason I ask is a significant amount of money to this town.
I, sure.
I did read somewhere that the.
I thought he said, they said they did.
Who are gonna do the work are required to.
But I thought.
Out for any of.
Which.
Well, that's, I mean, the permit money is part of our, our contract monies, but.
But that money will blow into our town.
Sure.
No, I'm just asking, right? I mean, that doesn't change.
No, no.
If you're taking down hundreds and hundreds of trees, that's a lot of money.
Right, and.
So don't you think we should have a tree permit?
But.
In hand, so we go ahead of time, because once you start clearing, we're going to have no way of knowing what was done.
Yeah, but then.
Right.
They, they're not clearing native trees. They're clearing bases.
Doesn't make any difference.
Is the language saying that?
Like a tree's a tree. And my other, actually a couple of other questions. Are you going to chip the brush off the trees that are taken down? Uh, leaving the brush on the ground?
No, the, the trees will be left in the woods and.
Oh, the brush.
The branches. Yeah, the brush will be cut, um, it will be cut down to a height so that it's not, uh.
When you fell a tree.
Yes.
What are you going to do with the branches? I guess that's.
Right, well, they'll be locked basically so that, you know, they're at a lower height, yes.
You're leaving the brush on the ground?
Yes.
That's pretty unsightly.
Well.
If you take a thirty foot tree down, it's going to be a hell of a bunch of branches on the ground.
Sure.
And you're not chipping?
Uh, no. I mean, we may chip some of it, you know, we do have.
I mean, we have.
Have a chip, chipping.
A, as a board, we have to look at our residents have to see this for years.
Yes, um.
I don't think they're taking down thirty foot trees. I mean.
They could.
Wasn't there talk about the?
No, I mean, some.
Then the trees that were in distress were going to be taken down.
Yes.
And you're going to open the canopy. So.
A little. Yes, so, no, you're correct. Um, so, you know, there is some chipping in our, in our contract items, so that is a possibility. Um.
I mean, you see where I'm coming from.
I know, I know.
Okay.
Where you're coming from, yeah.
The tree permit would be, would tell us exactly. Right.
Coming down, uh, what should be paid for and the board can decide.
Exactly.
Whether they're satisfied, where it's going to be disposed of.
And my last question is, um, are you or an outside contractor planting the new trees?
Uh, we have a contractor, so.
Is he or she responsible for the, the survival of those? Like, like a one or two year guarantee?
Yes, we have a guarantee on that.
So they have to water.
Uh.
Necessary.
Yeah, or replace.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to discuss the tree permit a bit because, uh, when I've, we first approached Steve Wolfly about this, um, you know, he was pretty certain that we wouldn't have to pay for every single tree because this is a civil cultural treatment.
Not what, it's determined by DBH.
True.
Diameter press type.
Right.
So that, if, 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 if the diameter isn't qualified, there would not be a fee.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, have you done this in other towns and municipalities?
Um, yeah, I mean, we've done full blown timber harvests in other municipalities.
Did, did you have to pay, get tree permits there?
Uh, no.
Oh.
No, I, I, under, yeah, yeah, under civil cultural.
And not, when NICEC takes that a public utility, right? Uh, I mean, they're an environmental agency, but they're on behalf of a.
But those are state roads.
On our town roads, when they clear up on my street, are they getting?
No, not on a town.
Right, so that's my point. So I mean, I, we're not saying that you need it. We're going to research that.
I think it's a, it's a matter that staff will review and.
Yeah, exactly.
Provide the board with some additional input. I think that it is, um, it is characteristically different when it's being performed for uh, the overall, you know, silvicultural, uh, health, uh, of the forest, um, as opposed to someone relandscaping a property or clearing for a new development or building or, uh, you know, to improve their view shed. Um, and, and, but we'll review the applicability of that.
The chairman's point is just because it's being done for this, it's going to look a certain way. It's not going to change because it's.
That's my, that's my thing. I mean, if you're taking.
Well, I, I will have, uh, this.
Okay. The, the difference in, and please correct me if I make an incorrect statement on this, um, you know, part of, part of this thinning is, you know, to improve the health of the remaining trees. Um, if that's not done, you know, with one of the, the major storms and we've had them come through in different areas, there's a lot more brush down as a result of uh, of an unhealthy forest in a.
Oh, I, I'm not arguing that, I know. It's just, but, but if you're talking about many, many, many trees, that's a lot more brush that will come down in a storm theoretically. I'm just, and it, that's a pretty scenic corridor. That's.
They own quite a, quite a. They're going to the forest and I mean, there is that, there is quite a large DOT right of way between the road and our woods there. Um, and what we've done in the past in other areas is do, uh, a, a visual buffer.
Okay.
Of, um, you know, a certain, certain distance from the property line or the, you know, the boundary of the project. Um, where we may, may lop, lop the tops more heavily, um, and then beyond that, you know, we may leave them a little higher, but it, it, uh, reduces some of the visual effect.
So from a pretty monotonous point of view, it, it would seem counterintuitive to me to drop the branches on the ground that you're trying to eliminate the invasive species from. You're, you're actually covering them with the debris, correct?
Yeah, so, uh, the stages of the project, uh, we, we would treat the invasive species first.
Okay.
And then we would be, we would be doing the tree felling.
So when I, I, I saw in there and from a personal point of view, because I have a boat in that very area.
Yeah.
Um, it, the recreational aspect is going to remain open?
Uh, yes, so.
Will there be?
There will be.
About the application of the, of the, the chemicals?
Uh, yeah, so on the reservoir side, um, that is open to recreation. So, um, the boat areas will be, and the recreation areas will be closed and signage will be, will be displayed when those areas are closed. Um, but that'll be rolling as, you know, as an area is worked on, it'll be closed, but the others will remain open. Um, so it'd just be to accommodate the work and then they'll be reopened. Uh, on the north side of Route one hundred, um, all that land is no trespassing at this point. Um, so we, and there's no recreation going on.
Uh, so you, you, in, in terms of, uh, like from Mosman Avenue um, up to the Musco Farm.
The farm.
On the left hand side, as you're heading north at most.
Yes.
There's that pond there and all that wood there. Is that, is that part of the project as well?
Uh, yes.
I don't have any further comments.
It's all good.
I mean, uh, I'm like you, I, I use, uh, a lot of the DEP, uh, recreational facilities and they're not in good shape.
Oh.
And there's ton of bases both in the water and out. And, you know, we discussed this when they were, uh, had applied for the, um, um, the herbicide, aquatic herbicide to go in and kill the watermill foil.
Mm-hmm.
Um, now we have zebra mussels that are popping everywhere, right? And, uh, and then just access to some of the sporting areas are difficult because of all the vines and invasive. So, um, you know, it's definitely time. I'm glad that you guys, you know, recognize that. It's, you know, and I definitely would have the same concerns that the chairman does, that, you know, you guys aren't going to come in and just, you know, slash and burn and leave and make it look, uh, unpleasant.
Right.
Down, so, um, but at the same token is work that needs to get done. And so I think we should definitely research the need for a, a tree permit.
Yeah.
And you, my experience is DEP does not get treated as, uh, some sanctimonious entity and they're subject to permits for other things.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I'll have it looked into.
Um, anybody have, what's your feeling about scheduling a public hearing?
They would definitely have to. Uh, there's our private homes on that, uh, on east, uh, west side of Route one hundred, right? So I'm sure they all have some concerns. Um, you know, I guess it is your land, right? Definitely need to do that. I, soon.
You want to get more information or schedule a public hearing next meeting?
Can we do both?
You can get both, do both?
Yeah.
I'll make a proposal that we, uh, schedule a public hearing for next meeting, which is September eleventh, twenty twenty four.
Second that.
All in favor?
Hi.
Just one side question, um, obviously you, you wanted to start June twenty four.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, I saw a second half, so is, is it ASAP?
Uh, basically, uh, you know, as soon as we can get all the permits, we're.
Okay.
We're ready to start.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But just, just to be clear, you, you're not stockpiling any of the waste?
No, not, no, it's, it's.
Remember there was a huge pile down on the corner of a hundred and, I guess that's.
One eighteen, yeah, and that, the, actually that's DOT.
Was it?
Dumps their waste there. And actually, um, I'm told that.
That's where.
That's being cleaned up.
Yep, it, it looks like it's mostly cleaned up.
Yeah.
About a hundred percent.
Yeah, some of those, that's a.
Somewhat cleaned up.
Um, yeah, no, we have a waste disposal in our contract, so any waste won't be left on site.
Okay.
So you know the history, uh, NICEC, uh, a few years ago did like a five or ten year tree mitigation throughout the town, certain sections of the town. And, uh, their policy is to leave the trunks for the homeowner to deal with.
Mm-hmm.
And they just, uh, uh, what do you call it? Wood chip the tops.
Right.
And so there was a, a lot of residents that had complained about that. And so that's why the chairman is concerned about, uh, aesthetics.
Sure.
And what's going to happen with, uh, with the material.
Yeah.
To see.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll see you next month.
Alright.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Chairman, just before we get into the meat and potatoes of this agenda, I'd like to introduce you. Well, this is Mary Desmond, Esquire from the Abrams Defense Center. And she is going to represent the board effective, uh, September first, when there is a, uh, well, a merger of what's left of Stevens Barone Riley. With, uh, the Abrams Defense Center. And, um, Mary will be Senator for the Planning Board. And I will see that she gets in touch with Wendy and, uh, I, I sent her an email, so she'll, she'll know Wendy and and I, and I advise her, uh, that this is one of the most pleasant, uh, experience that, that you could never have to represent. That you could ever have to represent this board. It's been that for me and you know it.
Welcome, you've got big shoes to fill. Jerry's, he's always been very popular with this town.
Yeah. Thank you, that was very.
Thank you.
Welcome, we'll see.
Good luck.
Kinda snuck that in, didn't you?
I did, I did, you know, I saw it was a hiatus here.
Well, thank you for all your years. Go back a lot of years with us, Jerry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright, um, next is um, I'll get that Dave. Um, walk us through this zoning text amendment for the seasonal outdoor dining.
Yes, so um, both of these, you have two zoning text amendments that are before you. They um, were uh, initiated by uh, the town board. Um, the first one is outdoor dining accessory to restaurants and retail foods. So this came up as a result of COVID. When uh, there were a number of um, establishments, I think there are, there are, there are eight. That applied to the town to have outdoor dining. And this is a way of during that time of. Those establishments being able to remain open and viable. And um, the town board uh, recognizes that the um, the COVID. Um, requirements or, you know, COVID has passed, but the, and they had relied on upon the. Um, the ability to uh, kind of waive these, these requirements as a result of that. But understanding that COVID is now over and that they would like to have. Uh, legislation in place that would allow for establishments to have outdoor dining to supplement their, um, their existing. Uh, uses. So I've worked with uh, the building department um, for probably. Better part of two months on coming up with the language. Um, the uh. Some of the highlights, just so that everybody's clear, is that when an applicant comes in. And asks for seasonal outdoor dining, they're not getting additional seats. They had, as an example, if they had one hundred seats in their facility. They couldn't make an application for thirty outdoor seats in addition to the existing one hundred they have. They have to take thirty from the inside. And they could move those out outside because there are other issues. If they wanted, if they wanna have additional outdoor seats. That would require a, a formal site plan application. Here, in order to keep this as kind of as business friendly as possible, um, there is no site plan amendment. It's really a, they need to apply to the building department and there is a, uh, an application form that they would. Uh, fill out and submit. They would have a um, a much more generalized layout of the. Of what they're proposing. Um, it would be reviewed by uh, the Bureau of Fire Prevention, the building inspector, the fire. Um, I forget his title, the fire, not the fire chief, but the. Fire marshal, thank you. Um, so that it would, it would be reviewed by them and then it would go to the town board for approval. Um, so we tried to keep this as kind of business friendly as possible, not make it onerous. Um, it's based on comparable legislation that um, we looked at in town of Lewisboro. Village of Sag Harbor, Village of East Hampton, and, and those last two are because they have a, um, and that. They, during the, the course of the year, they have, obviously have uh, restaurants that use outdoor space. So we tried to make this um, as uh, business friendly as possible, but still understand that there needs to be some technical review. And including um, the uh, the building department specifically in the review of the application. So that, now the town board, um, they sent this to you because they are. Technically, under the State Environmental Quality Review Act process, they are, they declared their intent act as lead agency. So normally they refer these applications to you. Um, you would typically. Get back to them and say, we do not object to the town board acting as lead agency. If you have any additional comments. Um, you can provide them to me now, or um, you have time at the next meeting if you wanted to consider it in any more detail. To provide me with those comments, because after the board declares themselves to be lead agency at their September meeting. They still need to hold a public hearing. So there, that public hearing wouldn't happen until October. So you have time. Between now and then, particularly at your September meeting, if you wanted to provide some additional comments to the town board.
Is this just existing outdoor space, not making new outdoor space?
Correct, right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nothing changed.
Right, and, and yeah, if you're, if you're adding additional impervious surface.
You're in trouble.
You, you, well, you have to come in for a formal site plan. So you're essentially using a parking lot or. Uh, area adjacent to.
Existing.
Existing, right? Like for instance, if you go over to um, Oscars two over here, they have some outdoor. So, so it's, they would need to come into the, to the, to the, to the town with their application. And so that's how that process would get, yeah. That's, that's what's contemplated.
Do we need a motion to ask to uh? Okay, the town board.
Yeah, you do not object to the town board acting as lead agency.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Are they including like outside music or events or?
No, that's completely, if you wanna do outdoor music, that's a, you have to apply for a separate, yeah, for a separate application to the building department, right?
And you wanna just go over to public utility?
Yep, so the second item is.
It's called us getting ahead of other towns, surrounding towns.
Yeah, as you all know, um, there is a, uh, an application in Carmel just to the north for. Uh, battery storage facility. And part of what prompted this is that Roland Baroni, who's the town board. Um, attorney, uh, we, we reviewed the code with, with Tom Tuma, who's the building inspector. And while there was a comfort level that um, these types of facilities, these battery storage facilities. Are not allowed under the code, there, there is a uh, an application in a neighboring community where an attorney. Was making the argument that a battery storage facility is part of a public utility, even though they're all. For the most part, they're all private entities that are tying into um, the public utility system. So as a result, kind of belts and suspenders, I worked with Mr. Baroni on coming up with um, a specific definition of public utility. Which you have before you. Um, and I think the, the last sentence of which this definition does not include battery energy stories. Systems or similar facilities. So this is a way of the town attempting to protect itself from these types of uses without. Having, you know, with, with specific language in the code. So this is similar, um, they've issued their notice of intent to act as lead agency. So your first, you know, kind of. Uh, action would be that you do not object to the town board acting as uh, lead agency. And then it's the same situation, they're gonna declare themselves lead agency, schedule a public hearing at their September meeting for October. So if you have any comments now, you can give them to me. Want to wait until the September meeting, you could do that as well.
I think a no brainer, right?
Yeah.
Yep, no, no objection there.
Declaring themselves lead agency.
Okay.
Their second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna miss you. No, no. Not gonna miss you that much.
I carried away.
Haven't had fireworks in a long time.
No, no, we haven't had the police here.
No. If there's nothing else, um, our next meeting is September eleventh, twenty twenty four. Make a motion to adjourn.